Good afternoon. My name is Linay Palmasano and I'm the Chair of Committee of the Whole. I'm going to call to order our regular meeting for Tuesday, May 23rd, and ask the clerk to please call the roll and verify the presence of a quorum. Councilmember Payne.
Present.
Wonsley.
Present.
Rainville.
Present.
Vitale.
Present.
Ellison.
Here.
Osmond.
Here.
Goodman.
Present.
President Jenkins is absent. Chukti is absent. Kosky, present. Johnson.
Present.
Vice Chair Chavez.
Present.
Chair Palmasano.
Present.
We have 11 members present.
Thank you. I do anticipate we'll have more here shortly. Let the record reflect, however, that we have a quorum. We have two items on the published agenda today in addition to our reports of committees that have met this cycle. Our second item is from our Pattern and Practice Investigation Subcommittee, so I'll turn the meeting over to that Subcommittee's Chair or Vice Chair for that portion of the meeting. So first, item number one is our regular report on contract awards or amendments that have been approved over the last couple of weeks by the ad hoc work group established for American Rescue Plan Act-related expenditures. Staff doesn't have a presentation for this item today as usual, but is on hand if there are any questions. Are there any questions for staff? And I apologize, I'm not signed into Speaker Management at this moment, but maybe my Vice Chair could see if there's anybody in the queue. I'm seeing a queue without any people in it, so I will go ahead and just ask the clerk to file that report. Thank you. Our next item is part of our Pattern and Practice Subcommittee, so as such, I'll turn the meeting over, I'm going to hand the meeting over to Councilmember Ellison for that. Councilmember Ellison.
Hello, thank you. Item two is two separate directives. The first is a legislative directive requesting a comprehensive fiscal analysis of the potential costs and impacts of the settlement agreement in the litigation matter of the state of Minnesota by Rebecca Lucero, Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, or MDHR, versus the city of Minneapolis. The second is a request that the city auditor conduct an analysis of the operating and fiscal impact that can be expected as a result of the Minnesota Department of Human Rights' settlement agreement. I will invite Councilmember Wonsley to speak on these items, and I'll be happy to move approval of them as well.
Awesome. I would, you know, second that, of course, but just some context to this because some councilmembers might remember a prior iteration of both this legislative directive. I do want to note that we've worked now with the city auditor, the city attorney's office, MPD, the clerk's office, as well as council leadership, as well as the co-chairs of the Patterns and Practice Subcommittee to edit this in a way that allows us, again, to explicitly get existing information. I think there was lots of conversation and confusion about the prior legislative directive and thinking that we needed to, you know, get new information or, again, add additional burden on our staff to create said new information. And this is modified to reflect that most of the information we're requesting is already readily available and to expedite the timeline on which we can receive that information as a body as we start having budget discussions. So that's what is factored into both the legislative directive and the motion for our legislative departments. And again, I thank all my co-authors and colleagues and staff who have really been instrumental in getting this up to a place that I think reflects our shared interest in getting the information we need to make informed decisions about a critical component of our public safety system moving forward. So that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Wonsley. And I put myself in queue just to say I was able to be in a few meetings with the clerks and the auditor as well, and it seems like staff is, has vetted this information and is prepared to provide this information. And so I don't know if there's any questions for staff, but that was, just wanted to provide that it feels like we're in a good place in order to receive this information. And I'm happy to call on Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you. A couple of things, we've had a lot of conversation about this, and I really appreciate the opportunity to meet with the author of this yesterday. I think we, it cleared up so many of my own concerns and things that I had also been hearing from the people that would be doing this work. I think it's really important that as we go forward and work on legislative directives, that we do so with talking about information that's already available, right? These legislative directives are not to add workload onto people's existing work plans as much as possible. And it is about getting timely information, it's about being able to have that oversight function effectively as a legislative body. I do know that from the Budget Office standpoint, not the Auditor's Office standpoint, but the Budget Office standpoint and the Mayor's Office, that this first item that does go through the Mayor's Office to different departments, there is concern about getting it back by August 15th because of the budget coming out on August 15th. As Chair of Committee of the Whole, I have difficulty promising it by August 15th because there are several other large things coming forward to COW in the next couple of months. We only have four meetings before August 15th, and those are already largely scheduled with different kinds of things coming at them. So I would appreciate an amendment to only the first part that would remove that date because I don't think it's realistic to meet if there's will for that on the body, but I just want to acknowledge as a Chair of this Committee of the Whole that it would be very difficult to schedule that into the Committee of the Whole meetings in these next few cycles. But I think that if it does come forward in a timely way, which I think September is certainly realistic, that that would be plenty of time to have all the information in front of us as we begin our budget consideration process because, as we all know, the Mayor's budget comes out on August 15th. So I would like to make that amendment to change the, for now, just to remove the date in the first part of the legislative directive. Thank you.
There's a few folks in queue, but I also know that we've been joined by Council President, who is the Chair of the Subcommittee, and so I'm happy to pass the chairship back over to the Council President if you're ready.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. And next in queue then is Councilmember Payne on the Palmasano amendment.
Thank you, Madam President. I understand the concern about stacked agenda for COW. I just want to express two different things associated with that. One, I think it's really important that we have some sort of time box for some of this work, and I've worked at City Hall much longer than I've been a councilmember, and dates come and go quite frequently. It's not an anomaly to run past. And I, as a co-author of this, I'm, I'd like us to hold to that date, but I'm understanding of the type of flexibility that might be necessary, so I don't think we need to formally get rid of a deadline. I don't think that necessarily benefits anyone when it comes to prioritizing their work. That's one. And then the second thing is, we're a deliberative body, and if it takes a little bit longer to go through a meeting because we have important work to deliberate on, I think that's totally appropriate for us as a body. Our jobs are very hard, but they're not so hard that we can't sit through another 20 minutes in a meeting. So that's how I feel about that.
Councilmember Wonsley on the Palmasano amendment.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, well, one, call in and ask for clarification from Clerk Carl, who really helped us get this part, which asks for our estimate of range of potential operational impacts. We did an estimate because there's already budget discussions that has been happening with our department, so there's already an understanding of what some of these estimates are. Also, based in the 2024 biannual budget, which we just received that projection last week, so we already have, again, and I want to emphasize that, though with legislative directives, we do have the authority to ask executive staff to produce new information, that is not what is being asked of in this legislative directive in motion. So again, and the things that I'm requesting or that co-authors are requesting for point one, these are points of information that's already readily available, and I just want to make sure I've reflected, at least in conversations with Robert, with Clerk Carl, is, am I speaking out of line so far in that? Please let me know.
Madam President, Councilmember Wonsley, no. The request is for an estimate of the impact, not for sort of the Mayor's next step, which is recommending the next budget. So this is saying, what would be the professional budget staff or financial staff's estimate of the range of potential impacts that could happen? It certainly is not asking the staff to go to the next step, which is usurping the Mayor's right to propose a budget.
Palmasano.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to a couple of the things said, and I hear Councilmember Payne about just removing deadlines. I do think that September 5th or 19th would probably be the most realistic ones to have a Committee of the Whole conversation on this that would allow for the amount of information to be presented and for us to consider it, but the fact of the matter is, we'll get better information by then. We'll get better information when budget staff is not also working hard to put together by August 15th the Mayor's budget recommendation. So I'm interested in what they say. I don't want them to then have to come back twice. So if, to have to put a date on it, I would definitely think that that would be realistic, but I don't think that, you know, August 15th just isn't realistic to me because really that means it has to come back by August 1st because the August 15th date is the Mayor's budget release date, and so it wouldn't, that also wouldn't suffice to have it even on August 15th. So that's why I suggested it the way that I did. So I'll just, I will stick with that, but I wanted to be forthcoming in what I was thinking when I said that. Thanks.
Councilmember Wonsley, for your second comment on this amendment.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to emphasize, and I shared this also with you, Council Vice President Palmasano, this information is being asked to come back to Patterns and Practice Subcommittee, which is going to be meeting regularly, especially in light of developments with the legal settlements. So the goal, as been indicated by commitments by our city attorney's office, as well as the co-chairs of Patterns and Practice Subcommittee, is to make sure we're having those developments come frequently throughout the summer, and I think this legislative directive reflects that of, there's going to already be inclusion of that. Again, since this is not new information, this is not duplicative, this is some of the information that apparently already exists. We can absolutely receive this before August 15th, and we've spoken with everyone about the date in particular and knowing that we have the authority and have the ability to get information at any time, especially when it's readily available. So I think the goal has always been, we should be having this information before the Mayor's budget to get a sense of what decisions are going to be in front of us as it pertains to the budget, especially after that bleak presentation last week where we learned there hadn't even been fiscal components of the consent decree included in that very startling budget presentation. So it made it very clear, there's a gap right now, and we should be absolutely getting the information that we need, getting those fiscal impacts way prior to August 15th. So I just wanted to uphold that of like the intentionality of the deadline that's already included in this legislative directive that has been vetted with numerous departments that worked to help put this together and allow us to get that information. And I would say, if you don't want that information, do not open the report, don't read it. Like, that's fine, there's a number of us that would like to get that information before August 15th. If you are fine with waiting until September, that's completely okay, but if there's a number of us that need that information to relay the fiscal impacts of our, of this consent decree to our constituents, we should have the ability to get that information way prior to August 15th, and if staff is willing and ready to provide that, why hold that up? So I'm not supportive of this particular amendment. And again, we'll emphasize, if that's not something you want by August 15th, do not open up the email, don't read the report of, like, you know, you can wait, but this is something that a number of us recognize is absolutely urgent in nature and want to start having those discussions with staff, with our one-to-ones, with the Mayor's Office about the budget priorities that we're going to be, you know, creating over the next several months. So I did want to name that.
Councilmember Chavez.
Council President Jenkins, I have two questions for the city clerk. Can you clarify who has the power of the purse?
Council President, to Councilmember Chavez's question, if I understand it correctly, I heard you say, "Who has the power of the purse?" And as we've discussed several times over the last year during government structure, the Charter, primarily through Article 9, addresses the financial policies and affairs or operations of the city government, and in all of those cases, the city council, for the city, not necessarily the park board and the BET and those other aspects, but for the city generally, the city council is the body that has what we call, quote unquote, "the power of the purse."
Thank you, Clerk. Given that we have the power of the purse, do you think we have the right to ask for this information before the Mayor makes his proposed budget?
Through the Council President and Chair of the Committee of the Whole, the Charter says that the Mayor must furnish to the council any information that the council deems necessary for the exercise of its legislative function, including but not limited to the budget. So that's black and white from the Charter. It's in Article 7, it's Section 7.1 H2. In terms of legality of that, I would defer to the city attorney.
City Attorney.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Chavez, I don't know that I have much more to add. Clerk Carl read the provision of the Charter exactly as it's written, so yes, the council has the authority to ask for this information, and it's really up to this body to decide, you know, as a body, whether you want to request the information.
Thank you, City Clerk, thank you, City Attorney. I urge my colleagues to let this council use its power, to continue to have its power, its legislative authority, to make sure that we have access to this information as the people that have the power of the purse to make informed decisions that are going to represent our constituents fairly. So I just urge my colleagues to vote this amendment down.
Thank you, Madam President. I, if I may, I see our auditor here, and I just would like to ask a question of you, please.
Welcome, Mr. Patrick.
Mr. Patrick, thank you. Your staff time, you're spending all this time to prepare the budget, is an extra month needed to do this legislative directive? Would that be helpful to your staff?
Council President Jenkins, Councilmember Rainville, our motion that addresses the city auditor's office, specifically the Policy and Research Branch, is the second motion, and I don't believe that it has that, that date conflict because we're not working on preparation of the budget. Our, the work that's being directed to the Policy and Research Division is more research in nature, comparators to other jurisdictions and things of that, like that, so it's not, not bound to our city budget.
Great, thank you. If I may, so what staff would be giving us this budget? This is coming from the Budget Office directly, and I see we don't have anybody from the Budget Office here, so I guess no one can answer that question?
Point of order, Madam Chair, I just, or point of clarification, the information, the piece that we're talking about, the amendment we're talking about, has nothing to do with our city auditor. Our city auditor is fine with the timeline as outlined, and I really appreciate how he and Councilmember Wonsley have worked together on this directive. This whole amendment that we're having a lot of discussion about is simply about what the budget team, the MPD and the Mayor's Office need to do their work and to get back to us in a timely fashion. So I don't think that August 15th is realistic. I'm sure that, I know some of this work is already done and could be shared in due time, but I don't, this whole amendment is about a conversation that started in agenda setting with the budget director, and it is about his and his staff's availability. He's the interim director, about their ability to come forward with all of the information that is being asked of them and to do a good job of it. That's all.
Thank you for making that clear, and I do understand, thank you, Mr. Patrick. The question I have is, we're talking about a month of time, to give the staff another month, and I'm asking, what is the staff's opinion on, do they need that extra month? Or is the deadline that Councilmember Wonsley has suggested, is that appropriate? That's the question. I see there's no one from the Budget Office here, so I guess that question.
As the co-author, I just wanted to offer.
Excuse me, excuse me, I just want to note, Council Vice President, your comments will act as your second speech, and I would appreciate if we can get into the Speaker Management to comment. So the next comment was from Councilmember Johnson, and Councilmember Wonsley, you have spoken twice on this amendment. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate Councilmember Rainville's question around this from budget. I don't think that there's anyone here from budget, from the budget team, I'm not sure if there's anyone out in the hall or watching this. I know that this staff direction was posted in advance on limbs, and it sounds like staff were also worked with as well so that they were aware of this. I think unless we have anyone from the budget team that is able to express concerns around this, it seems like by not being here, that also might be an indicator as well. I don't want to read in and ascribe motives to not being here or anything like that. I'd just say it's, no one is here from budget, it seems like, to answer this question. And so, you know, I'm certainly always sensitive to these concerns around staff and not wanting to put an undue burden on them. I also think it sounds like, in this case, there was a lot of conversation around these staff directives and not seeing anyone here raising concern or not receiving communication from that team about it, makes me think that it's probably not a huge deal with the current deadlines that we have. And so, you know, I guess, at least my thinking right now, unless I hear anything that strikes me differently, is that I don't see a problem with moving forward this directive today to council, and if we get any communication after that expressing serious concerns around being able to make this deadline work, I think that this would most likely be fine and work out for folks. And I appreciate our auditor as well being here and being able to speak to this item as well, and the work that everyone put in to it, you know, that we did have a substantial conversation around a previous direction at, I believe, Committee of the Whole, and I was one of the councilmembers who voted against that legislative direction, and it did not go through because we were being sensitive to concerns around staff capacity and time, and so I'm glad to see that out of that conversation, there was an effort to figure out how we could bring forward something that is supportable, and so I want to thank the authors on this for their efforts around that and taking to heart as well the feedback from staff in this and from their colleagues. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmond.
Thank you, Madam President. I second Councilmember Johnson's comments. I think if there was a real problem, a real issue with the date, should have the budget team present or the chief, or in that matter, Mayor's Office. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I call on Councilmember Kosky, the Chair will recognize Clerk Carl.
Thank you, Madam President. I put myself in queue, I'm sorry I wasn't in there earlier. I wanted to respond, just to remind the council and the city attorney certainly will be able to answer in more detail, but the policy respects the division of legislative and executive authority in the city charter, and this is a request to the Mayor. This is not a directive to a specific department. It's the Mayor's responsibility to assign to the appropriate departments to provide the information that council, by appropriate vote of the body, deems necessary to conduct its work. So it's not necessarily budget that does all the work, I'm certain budget would be involved in this, I'm certain HR would be involved, or the Human Resources Department, the Police Department, there are other departments that would be involved in generating the responsive data to this request. It is not a directive to the Budget Office specifically. It is a request to the Mayor to use the administration and the 4,000 employees in 25 different departments under his disposal to answer what council deems necessary to conduct its official functions.
Thank you, Clerk Carl. Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a quick question for maybe one of the authors. I just want to clarify because I understand that we have changed the language so that we can get information that we currently have available, and so I just want to understand, so for example, if we were to bring this forward, because it's just asking for the information ahead of the Mayor's budget, so for example, let's just say this came back to us in two weeks' time, is that the information that we would receive, because we, I think we all know and can understand that this information is evolving, right? Like, we're going to continually have updates, so I just want to understand if, let's just say we got what their update was in two weeks, would that be satisfy your, your request here that we receive?
Would either of the authors like to speak to this?
I'll jump in as one of the co-authors. I mean, ideally, we would have an understanding of where we're at in terms of our spending when we passed the budget last year for monies for this we set aside, I don't remember if it was $1 or $2 million or something to that effect. Have we spent $20,000 or $1.5 million? Ideally, I'd love to know that information as we all get ready to meet one-on-one with the Mayor to talk about our budget priorities because that would help shape some of my conversations, so obviously, we're not going to, as authors, we worked really hard to make this a realistic timeline so that, you know, we're not making people produce sophisticated information tomorrow, but it would be nice to have it as part of that, these broader conversations we're having as we're thinking about our own budget priorities going into this budget cycle, so I don't know if that answers your question.
And to also just quickly add, I think what you're asking, Councilmember Kosky, is already listed at the end of the legislative directive where it says, "Prior to the presentation of the Mayor's recommended 2024 and 2025 biannual budget." So if they come forward in two weeks, that's completely appropriate as, you know, indicated in this legislative directive. If they come in July, that's also appropriate. So I think we lay that out in the legislative directive as it's currently written.
Okay, that's helpful, because I just want to, just wanted to make sure that I, you know, reemphasize what I'm hearing is that we are asking for information that we currently have, and so whether that comes to us in two weeks, or if that comes to us in six weeks, or if it comes to us on August 14th, it's a rolling, that's, that information continues to evolve and roll, but we would get what that information is at that moment in time that the Mayor's team would be presenting, and so I just want to make that, that clear, and I think that that's appropriate, but I also, and so if we were to get that and we get this rolling time, we would get something maybe sooner than August 15th, we'd also have the Mayor's budget, and then, as promised in our last meeting, I did say that we would have a budget committee, meeting specifically for the MDHR consent decree, and that has already been scheduled for September 11th. So we would have regular updates on this information, so we would have current before the, before the Mayor's budget is proposed at the proposal, and then again on September 11th. So just wanted to, to set some of those dates out. Thank you.
Councilmember Chukti.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Kosky, I really appreciate you laying out that, that timeline and that we're going to continue to receive regular updates about the fiscal impact of the settlement agreement with the, with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. I imagine that in the coming years, we are going to receive very regular updates about what this, what this consent decree is going to cost us, and that's, that is a good thing, that makes sense to me. It's, it's a really important document and one that's going to cost a lot of money and time, and that is, that's okay, that's good. time, and that is, that's okay, that's good. The one thing I wanted to just speak to, I know there, we're, as we're talking about the impact on, on staff and the ability to reasonably meet this deadline, as you all know, the items that come in front of us are a culmination of a lot of hard work that goes into the, the pre-policy-making, the pre-legislative stage. And, you know, I think I've heard Councilmember Wonsley talk about this a little bit, but want to just take a, take a second to first thank her for the immense amount of work her and her team have done with, with staff, both on the legislative and executive side, to put this, to put this together. But also then, you know, make sure that it, it is stated that this deadline is, is confirmed to be workable for MPD, for, for other departments and staff that are affected by this. At the end of the day, we don't get to decide which departments or which staff are going to produce these items. That's, that's, that's the mayor's power. Ours is just making sure that we are, we're passing an item that meets the outcome we're trying to get to. And it is important for us, as we're, as we're writing these legislative directives, to be in communication with staff that may be impacted, and that work has been done very rigorously and thoroughly in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chugtai. And colleagues, I have been informed by the maker of the motion that the council vice president, that she intends to withdraw this amendment, and the chair will recognize council vice president to just explain.
Sure. I don't want to let perfect be the enemy of the good here. I don't see will for making this change right now, and the person who's best equipped to speak to the level of detail and work that they were planning to do is at the GFOA conference. We've sent him to a work conference, so that is why he's not here to speak today. So that's my interest. I appreciate this conversation. I think it's an important one when we talk about how we proceed with legislative directives and who we work with on these kinds of initiatives going forward. So thank you for the conversation.
Thank you, Council Vice President, and seeing no other people in queue on the original motion for a legislative directive, I will ask the clerk to call a roll.
Madam Chair, can I clarify, are we voting on the entire item number two? Or just, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Wonsley.
Aye.
Rainville.
Aye.
Vita.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
Chugtai.
Aye.
Koski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chavez.
Aye.
Chair Palmasano.
Aye.
That's 13 ayes and zero nays.
That motion carries, and this committee's recommendation will be forwarded to Thursday's city council meeting for final action. And I will now turn the chair back over to Council Vice President Palmasano.
Thank you. Next, we'll receive reports from the standing committees on matters to be considered by the full council this Thursday. I first want to share that actually yesterday, we had the first meeting reconfigured by city charter of our audit committee. We have some really impressive new community members, ready to serve, and are all ready and have gone through their introductory things and been sworn in. So we adopted our new charter yesterday, and I look forward to having them onboard and making progress on an ambitious audit work plan for the rest of this year. So there is no update from that, but I felt it was important to mark it because it was the first reconstituted audit committee meeting. So in terms of reports of committees, we'll begin with the budget committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Koski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The budget committee met last cycle to discuss the current service level budget for 2024. While the committee didn't forward anything to council this cycle, I'll note that a couple budget committee meetings have been added to the calendar for June, and those meetings are in the process of being noticed on internal and public calendars, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any. We'll move on to Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee, chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Business Housing Inspection and Zoning Committee is bringing 14 items forward for approval on Thursday. Item number one is an expansion of premise for snack bar. Item two is, was a long conversation in committee, and I think it was needed just so everyone could get a sense of the modular innovative solutions project at 415 Royalston Avenue. This is asking the state for a grant from deed, as well as accepting that grant should it come through, and there were a number of people from the project in the committee meeting, and it's all just really wonderful news. Item number three is a moratorium on certain high-impact industrial uses. I'll note that we did pass that moratorium in the council in the last cycle. This was confirming that. Item three is granting an appeal at the Uptown Theater set to open next week. Item number five are the liquor license approvals, six are the license renewals. I'll note that there are quite a few of those coming forward. Item number seven is approving a legislative directive that has to do with prolonged vacancy in commercial and residential properties. Item eight is a grant agreement with MPHA for sprinkler system installation. Item number nine is authorizing changes to our Affordable Housing Trust Fund program as it pertains to the NOFA, the Notice of Funds Availability. I will note that this was heavily amended in committee despite the objection of staff, and I'm sure we'll talk about that at the council meeting. Item number 10 are the QAP changes for the 2024-25 9% tax credit round. Item number 11 is a rezoning at 3410 42nd Street East. Item 12 are the changes that we are making to the 2040 ordinance. These are the built form changes. Again, this does not change any of the underlying zoning, but basically notes what can and can't happen, which, within each of the districts, and there are many parts to that plan. Item number 13 and 14 are two legislative directives looking at neighborhoods serving commercial and residential areas, as well as research and recommendations to strengthen environmental justice issues within the 2040 plan, two important topics to many of the committee members that require further investigation. I'm happy to answer any questions on any of the items coming in front of us on Thursday.
Thank you. Next, we have the Public Health and Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Vita.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward five items. Item one is authorizing a grant application to FEMA for targeted violence and terrorism prevention. Item two is appointing Health Commissioner Demone Chaplin to serve as the Community Health Services Administrator on behalf of the city's Community Health Board. Item three is accepting a grant from the West Michigan Sustainable Business Forum for the 2023 Food Policy and Climate Action Cohort. Item four is accepting a Project Safe Neighborhood grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance to assist sworn investigators. And item five is authorizing contracts with organizations for the Partnership Engagement Fund. I will say, we saw a lovely video from the Partnership Engagement Fund, and if any of my colleagues haven't seen it, I would recommend that you do, and I'll stand for any questions on these items.
Thank you. Last but not least, the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Public Works and Infrastructure Committee is bringing forward 10 items this cycle. First is the Stormwater Management Program and Annual Report. Items number two and three are large block event permits. Item number four is a Green Line Extension Subordinate Funding Agreement with Metropolitan Council. Item number five is a layout approval for Second Street South Pedestrian Safety Project. Item number six is an agreement with Excel Energy for Hennepin Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project. Item number seven is the Biennial Route Maintenance Agreement with MINDOT. Item number eight is the city's comments on the F Line BRT Recommended Corridor Plan. Item number nine is the, this year's Public Works Week Honorary Resolution. We had a really fun presentation in committee on that. And item number 10 are obstruction permit fees updates, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any. So with that, we've concluded all business to come before committee today, and hearing no objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
..................................................................................................................